Call the meeting to order.
Nichols?
Yes, ma'am.
Flesch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
First this evening, we have a presentation from Williams Keepers LLC and it's the 2011 Audit and Financial Report. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. This year again, fiscal year ended September 30th, and by the time you go through the accrual period and so on, it does take some time to get the books closed. And then we proceeded right into audit and comprehensive annual financial report. Everything, I think, went pretty well and smooth to be done at this time. And a lot of that goes to Roger and his staff, as well as Williams Keepers for performing the audit. And I'm going to turn it over at this point to Roger and to not delay the exciting presentations for the company.
I haven't rehearsed my dance to keep it entertaining. We do have with us this evening, Heidi Chick, of course CPA with Williams Keepers. She has been over the governmental division as a partner, of course, with Williams Keepers for several years and has over 25 years' experience in governmental auditing. She has put together a PowerPoint presentation to hit the highlights of the audit and then, of course, make some notes on the financials itself. In the printout that you have, which is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, there will be some pages where the numbers aren't as legible as what we would like. And then I've put a reference page so that you can turn right to the CAFER itself, the 98-page report that each of you were provided last Friday. And, of course, if anybody in the audience would like to follow along through the CAFER, I have copies up here at the table. If not, you're welcome to pick up a copy afterwards or you can look at our website at mexicomissouri.org. At this time, I'd like to present Heidi Chick. Thank you.
Exciting is probably stretching it, but at least I have pictures. If nothing else. See if I can work that. Roger already introduced me, so we won't go through that. Our government team, we have three audit partners that focus in the government area at WK. We've got 15 staff that focus on governmental auditing. What that means is they get special training so the staff that you get out here knows what they're doing. They understand the accounting for it. As a result of our audit, we actually issue five separate reports and we'll go briefly through each one. One is an opinion on the financial statements themselves. The next two reports are because you spend federal money. We have to give two additional reports for that. And then the last two are required under auditing standards. One is a report on the actual audit process itself and one is a management letter with recommendations in it. You actually issue a comprehensive annual financial report and that's above what you're required to do under accounting standards. What that means is there's an introductory section that has like a transmittal letter, an org chart, and some other things in there. And then at the end, there's a statistical section that has 10 years' worth of trend data in there. So it shows 10 years' worth of data of revenue, expenses, a bunch of different areas. So it's a good place to look if you want to go back kind of through history and kind of see what the trends are. Those aren't required under accounting standards. But because you're reflecting excellence in reporting, that's what a CAFER does, you go ahead and prepare those. You actually submit the CAFER for, through a review and approval process, to the Government Finance Officers Association. And they give you an annual reward. You actually get a plaque, which is someplace. And for the fiscal year 10, was the 22nd consecutive year that you got that. So that's really pretty impressive. And the next page shows that. And really what it does is it just, it shows your commitment to excellence in reporting. So when people come out and look at your financial report, there's all kinds of data out there for them. Most governments that are committed to excellence in reporting, they go through this process. And so this is definitely a good thing. It takes a lot of extra work on Roger's and Vicki's part to do this because there's just a lot of data in there. The basic financial statements, the things that are required by accounting principles basically are the auditor's report, which we'll go through, management's discussion analysis. And then there's really two separate sections of financial reports in this binder. It's one of the reasons it's so big. There's government-wide financial statements and we'll touch on those. And that's where everything in the government is put together in one place. And there's a balance sheet, which is called a statement of net assets, and then a statement of activities. And that's everything put together full accrual basis. Then the second set of statements that you see in there are the fund financial statements. Those are the things that you're used to seeing that shows your individual funds. And those fund financial statements are actually then broken into two separate categories within the fund statements. One is the governmental funds. It's like your general fund, things that are focused more on governmental service. And then the proprietary funds, which are your utility funds. Within each one of those, and there's four state, the governmental funds has four statements and the proprietary funds have three statements. So if you get confused in all the pages, if you kind of go back to this, that kind of helps you keep straight what's all in there because there is a lot of information in there. The notes to the financial statements have a lot of different information in there. We'll go through those really quickly. Then there's stuff that's called required supplementary information. That stuff, again, you're required to put in there. Budget comparisons. The pension info is kind of interesting to look at. It gives you some trend information on that. And then there's some other supplementary information, which is basically the combining schedules that kind of go up front. And then the budget comparisons by fund. We're not going to go through all this, but if you go back to this page, it helps you keep straight what all you're looking at. If you flip to the independent auditor's report, it's the page that looks like this. It's got our letterhead on the top. I like to go through this each year. This is the one thing in this whole report that's our responsibility. And I think it's pretty important to understand what the audit is about. You only see this once a year, so it's probably not something you look at every day. The first paragraph basically identifies the statements that we audited. It emphasizes that it's the City of Mexico's responsibility. So even though we actually prepare the financial statements and then Roger and Vicki review and approve them, it's coming from things that you authorized. It's your transactions, things that went on in the city. So they're definitely your responsibility. And it's our responsibility to express an opinion on them. The second paragraph talks about the auditing standards that we follow. And because you spend federal funds, there's actually two sets of standards we have to follow. One's just the normal and generally accepted accounting standards. That's what GAAS stands for. I love the acronyms GAAS and GAGAS. It sounds pretty, not so good, but they actually are. So every audit that's performed follows generally accepted auditing standards. But because you spend those federal foreign, federal funds, we also have to follow generally accepted government auditing standards. So those are standards that are put on above the normal ones, require us to do more work, a couple different things. So there's actually two sets that you follow. And audit provides reasonable assurance. We don't look at every transaction. We don't look at every check. We don't look at every deposit. But it provides reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free of material misstatement. In order to figure out what to do, we gain an understanding of how things work here. We gain an understanding of how transactions are processed, what your controls are, the types of revenue and expenditures you have, so that we can figure out where we want to focus our time. We try and figure out if something were going to go wrong, where would it go? And that's where we do procedures. So we look at things on a test basis. In the end, we believe that the procedures that we perform provide a reasonable basis for our opinion. The actual opinion is in paragraph three. It's a clean opinion. It's the best opinion that you can have, consistent with prior years. And what that means is your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with governmental GAAS. So that's probably the key paragraph there. Paragraphs four, five, and seven just refer to other information that's in the CAFER, talks a little bit about what responsibility we take for that. And then paragraph six identifies one of the extra reports we put in there because of your federal funding. So that's really what's in the auditor's report. Any questions on that? Management's discussion and analysis is on pages three to 14. And if you look at nothing else in this great big document, this is where I'd focus my time. Because what it does is it takes what went on in the city during the past year and talks about it in pretty plain English. You don't have to be a CPA or an accountant to read it and understand what's going on. It compares this year to last year. It provides some real high-level overview of some different areas. The financial highlights, last year, at least accounting-wise, was a pretty busy year. You had issuance of revenue bonds, the wastewater plant and some other projects. You had different types of grants going on. And there was a new accounting standard that also had to be implemented this year. So we'll talk a little bit about those. Gives an overview of the financial statements, some financial statement analysis, and then some economic and other factors. So Roger actually writes this part. This is the one, the one part of the whole report that he has to take total responsibility for. But like I said, it's plain English. If you read nothing else, read this section. The entity-wide statements. If you flip over to page, just to mark these, 15 and 16, it is up there. These are the entity-wide statements. This is where everything in the city is put together in one spot. This is a full accrual presentation. What that means is all your assets are recorded. So your capital assets, your buildings, your streets, things like that, they're recorded. And all your debt's recorded as well. This is a statement that is closest to the statements you see for other companies. And it's broken into two columns, if you look. One is the governmental activities and one is the business-type activities. The governmental activities are activities that only a government does. You know, provide, please protection, you know, half-streets, things like that. The business-type activities are basically your utility funds, where you charge a service, a fee for the services that are provided. If you look at page 15, the statement of net assets, shows your assets, your liabilities, and then your equity. A couple, I went back and compared it to last year and noted a couple different things that are different this year if you take this page and compare it to last year. One is there's an investment in the Missouri Plant Science Center. It's showing up as investment and joint venture. That's new this year. You'll notice that there's an increase in accounts payable for construction and paving. And then obviously, an increase in capital assets and long-term debt for the wastewater treatment plant, the debt that was issued for it, and then the actual cash outlay for that. So those are some of the highlights of the differences this year compared to last year. If you look down at the very bottom right where it says total net assets and it's got 56 million, that's basically your equity. You take assets minus liabilities equals your equity. You've got 56 million, but almost 49 million of that is non-spendable because it's your fixed assets. It's your equipment, your buildings, your streets. So obviously, you can't spend that. Then the next section shows things that are restricted. What that means is somebody else has given you something but told you you can only spend it on this. So you can see there's a couple different categories there. The unrestricted portion, that which is available for you to choose how to spend, is about 4.6 million. Any questions on that statement? The next page, page 16, is a statement of activities. It's kind of a funky-looking income statement. And the way it's set up, if you look down the left-hand side, it shows the various basic services the city provides. You'll notice the top line says general government, public safety, streets. So it takes the basic services that the city does and puts them on their own line. And then the next column shows the expenses for those. The next couple columns where it says program revenues, that's where that line item has generated revenue. So for instance, if you look at general government, there's some charges for services. You've got some capital grants in. And then the columns to the right show the net outlay from providing that service. If you can follow that kind of across the page. So again, if you look at like general government, expenses were about 1.1 million. You had some charges for services, some capital grants. So in the end, it used up cash or used up resources of about 955,000. It does that for every one of those line items. Down below, and then it's got a section for the business-type activities where, again, it shows its expenses. It shows the revenue that it generated and then coming over basically to its net income. The general revenue down below includes things such as taxes, interest income. That is not specifically attributable to any one of those line items. So taxes come in, they're available to support any one of the functions within the city. If you look at the very third line from the bottom where it says changes in net assets, that shows the increase for the year. The governmental activities had an increase of about 380,000. The business-type activities, about 673,000. So the city overall had an increase in its equity of about $1 million this year. Compared to last year, it's a little bit different. The Community Development Grants Fund had less dollar amounts coming in for grants last year, but it also had less expenditures. And the wastewater had increased in fees, and so its income actually is up over last year. So that's a good thing. Any questions on that statement? The governmental fund statements, if you flip over to page 17, we're going to go through these really quickly. Again, there's four statements, like I said at the very beginning. The statement of assets, liabilities, and fund balances on page 17 is your balance sheet. Shows your assets, your liabilities, and your equity. If you go down to the third bullet point, there's a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. That's basically your income statement. It shows your revenue coming in, your expenditures going out. The two other statements reconcile from the balance sheet here over to the entity-wide. And the reason that you have to do that is the governmental funds are presented on a modified accrual basis rather than a full accrual basis that the entity-wide does. What that means is long-term items such as capital assets and debt are not recorded on the balance sheet here. The governmental funds focus on the near term. So they're focusing on assets that you're going to collect within a year and expenditures you're going to pay within a year. So capital assets are not recorded on page 17. Long-term debt's not recorded on page 17 because those are long-term, not short-term. So what we have to do is provide a reconciliation that walks you from these governmental fund statements over to those entity-wide statements. And that's what the second bullet does for the balance sheet and then the fourth bullet does for the income statement. So that's why you have four statements there. On the balance sheet, the statement of assets on page 17, there was really no significant changes from last year, but we'll look at something in a second because we did have to implement a new accounting standard. Most of the rest of the information on there is pretty consistent with last year. There was, on the income statement on page 19, there were some decrease in the intergovernmental revenue and capital outlays related to those economic grants that you had last year you didn't have this, didn't have this year. But and last year had that NID proceeds as well. They showed up. Any questions on those? There's lots of numbers there, so I think it's more important to kind of explain what they are and then give you a chance to look at them. One of the things that Roger had to do this year was implement a new accounting standard. It has to do with how equity is displayed on that governmental fund financial statement. What it did, two things that it did. One is it clarified some of the columns, the definition of what could be in its own column. We actually ended up having to move some of the funds around from last year. And then in the equity section, it also changed it so it showed constraints on spending. So if your fund, fund equity is a certain dollar amount, it showed any constraints on that spending to get down to the unassigned. The first two, non-spendable and restricted, somebody else tells you, you can't spend it. Okay? The last three that are up there, they're things that you decide. So if you go in and look at that statement, what you'll see that's new is you'll see that there's a non-spendable category. I tried to highlight them if you flip over to page 17. Basically, that's your prepaid's and perpetual care. You can't spend prepaid expenses. I mean, it's actually already money out the door, so you can't spend that. The perpetual care, that's where people have given you money that you use for perpetual care, but you can't spend the principal. So that's considered non-spendable. The restricted, again, is where someone else is giving you money for certain things and they tell you you can only spend it on that. So this is a third party telling you, you have constraints on your equity because you can only spend these for that. So you'll see things like capital improvements, public health, community development. Again, that's a third party telling you. This year, you did have some assigned in Parks and Recreation, and that's a management decision to put that there. And everything else is in unassigned. This year, you did not have anything in the committed or some of those other categories. It was the first year to implement it. So that is a little bit different presentation. And again, it's showing constraints on spending, what you can spend and what you have, you can't spend. You can only spend on certain things. Hopefully that, we talked a little bit about this last year. So hopefully that makes some sense. The enterprise funds, they're a little more straightforward because they're a full accrual, just like the entity-wide. They show up on page 21, 22, and 23. Not a lot of difference. So there's, you don't have to have that reconciliation between the fund statements and the entity-wide, like you did on the governmental funds. Their statement of net assets, basically, is a balance sheet. Again, it reflects your assets, liabilities, and equity. There's an increase in restricted cash due to the bond funds this year. And there's obviously also an increase in capital assets, accounts payable, and bonds due to the wastewater project. Page 22 shows your income and expense items. There was an increase in revenue due to the increase in rates. Expenses were pretty flat last year. Whereas the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund, in fund net assets on page 22 is accrual basis. You recognize revenues when some, or receivables when someone owes you money. You recognize payables when you owe somebody money. The statement of cash flows converts that to cash in and cash out. So that's the basic difference between those two statements. If you look at that, you had an increase in operational cash activities this year compared to last year. You had a decrease in financing cash activities and overall increase in cash balances. So page 23, again, is cash in, cash out. Page 22 is on their accrual basis. So you recognize receivables and payables. Any questions on any of those? And again, those are your business-type activities, your utility funds. The footnotes, people tend not to read them because they're long and, you know, they're not maybe as fun to look at as numbers. But they are really important because they're really key to understanding and giving you additional information about the numbers that are recorded in the other statements. So if you read through them, like there's a footnote that talks about your debt. There's a footnote that talks about receivables. So there's really a lot of good information in there to read through. Note one has your accounting policy. So it goes through almost line by line and tells you how you recognize your revenue, different things like that. The notes are consistent with last year, so there really aren't any significant changes compared to last year. There were a couple revisions to some of them, so I tried to note those. Page 28, the equity in Note 1K reflects the implementation of GAASB 34 or 54. So it just talks about what those different categories mean. Page 33, Note 7, talks about contributions to others. That's where you've given something to somebody else. Talks a little bit about that. Page 36, Note 10, long-term debt, obviously changed because you issued new debt this year. Note 16, loggers. We might look at this really briefly. If you flip over to page 40. And actually, where I'm going to have you look at is the top of page 41. This was not there last year. And basically, it has to do with how loggers fund, what loggers request from you. And every year, they say you've got to make this contribution. And there's an actuary out there that goes through and does all these calculations to figure out what you're supposed to pay in. But the increase from any one year is limited by statute. You can only increase your contribution by so much. What happened this year is the actuary calculated and said you should have put in so much money, but by statute, you could only put in a little bit less. So in the end, it results in you having a little bit of an obligation because you didn't pay in everything under actuarial standards. It's the way it works. I mean, you didn't do anything wrong. This is, this is showing up on most of the municipalities that we audit this year. That's all that means.
If you don't mind, I will add to that just a little bit. The under-state statute to 70.730, loggers can only make a change of 1% per year as far as the contribution amount for retirement. As everybody's well aware of, making investment returns since about 2008 has been pretty difficult. Loggers, in their actuarial analysis, would estimate they could make a return of about 7.5% on the money. And based on that, they come up with a percentage that a city is to contribute, or municipality is to contribute to fund their retirement. Unfortunately, they were not able to get that type of return, which would have led them to need to increase the contribution levels by the municipalities to fund that difference. Unfortunately, this state statute that I mentioned allows only a 1% change. We have contacted loggers to see if there's a way that the municipalities could get with them to possibly revise that state statute because if these type of conditions would continue, it would fall further behind.
Could I follow up on that at this point? I'm on page three of this little book here that you sent out. And does this, is this the same as, the 110,000 here, is this the same as the 99,000 you asked to adjust on loggers? Or you made an adjustment for that? Is that correct?
We, what we did was, we did not record this, but we disclosed it.
Okay. You did, we didn't make an adjustment to our books at this point?
At this point, no. No.
Okay.
Because it, when you take that, you'd spread it across all the different funds. So you'd have to go in and estimate how much goes to the general fund, how much goes to each one of the utility funds. So any one fund, the amount was not significant. So for this year, Roger chose not to record it and we agree because it's just not a big enough number, didn't cause your financial statements to be misleading.
So we'll see this coming up in our next budget year, then?
Yes, we would see that shortfall again. And we're getting to levels that we need to, we would need to record. We would hope that maybe the investment stream that loggers makes would offset some of this loss, but that will not be known until we get through the next fiscal year.
Okay. So these two are tied together, though?
Yes. Yes.
I was just curious as to why the numbers weren't the same. Are they different periods? I guess they're different periods. One is September 30 and the other is June 30. Is that right? Am I looking at that correct, or?
Part, the 99,450 on page three, that's just for the governmental activities. The difference between, and this probably isn't very clear, we probably should make it clear. The difference between the 110,000 that you see over on page 41
Right.
and the 99,000, that's the amount that would have been recorded in the utility funds. And we felt that that difference just wasn't even big enough to put in this report.
Okay.
So it's, it's not very clear, I agree. But the, if you took and add the governmental funds together with the enterprise funds, they would have added up to 110,000.
Okay. Okay. I was just wondering if I was looking at the same?
No, you're looking at it right. And I had to stop and think for a minute. You know, you're right. It's confusing.
Thank you.
But that's what it is. The only, the note that's different is subsequent event. Obviously, that would change every year, so you might look at that. While we're on the pension subject, and I wasn't going to go through the, we card supplementary information, but you might flip over to page 54. And what this is doing is, and this is, again, an actuarial computation for the most three recent years that they did an actuarial evaluation. But that second column shows that the value of the assets that are in loggers. This third column over shows that the estimated accrued liability. And it shows basically then the unfunded liability that's out there. Now, these are all estimates because anytime you do an actuarial study, you know, there's all kinds of, you know, estimates in there. But that gives you a feel for kind of the trend that's going on in the unfunded liabilities in the pension plan. And this, most governments have this as an issue. It's growing. And a lot of the reason is because, like Roger said, the investment return, particularly in 2008, was just so bad that they haven't been able to come back from it. If you look at the column where it says fund ratio, you can see back in 2009, it was 92% funded. The past two years, you've been about 88% funded. At some point in time, you know, the plan will have to have money in there to pay the benefits. And what Roger's talking about is it's easier to put enough money in as you go along rather than coming up with a big lump sum at some point down the road. And so even though you hate to, you know, spend more money now, in the long run, it's a lot easier. And that's where that, that state statute that limits what you can, you can increase it by in some ways really hurts your funding.
Of course, this is a point in time. This is September 30. Am I, yeah?
Right. And loggers does their actuarial report as of February. So there, there is timing differences.
Okay.
But that, that's all we have to put in there because they just do their study one time during the year and they do it as of February.
Yeah. So if, if they're tied to the market, that means that since September, the market's probably gone up 25%. So this number could have changed significantly correctly?
It could. But the loggers runs under the same investment regulations as we say the City of Mexico. They're not going to be entering into the stock market. It's going to be basically real estate and other cash investments as far as bonds and certificates, things like that.
Okay. So it's tied to the low interest rates and, okay.
The market going up definitely counts, but it also, it depends upon, you know, your employees and how long they stay and a lot of factors then. But if the market goes up, you're right, the liability will tend to go down.
Okay. Thank you, honey.
That's all I was going to cover on the basic financial statements. So we whipped through like 67 pages really quickly. And I don't want to go a lot into numbers, but I do want to answer any questions that you might have on what we've gone through so far. If you do go into it later and have any questions, let Roger know. And then we'll get back to you and get, get your question answered. The next section I want to talk about is the federal awards that you have. And it's really small up here. And if you look over on page, let me get the right page.
Page 98.
98. This lists all the federal expenditures that you had last year. About 2.16. This lists all the federal expenditures that you had last year, about $2.5 million. And it shows all the different grants that you have go through. That kind of drives our next couple slides of discussion. Because you spent more than $500,000 in federal funds, we have to do something that's called a single audit. Previously, before this law was passed, you could have every federal agency that gave you money come in and audit you, and that could be a lot of audits going on. So in theory, you could have had, besides us, you could have had another four entities in here auditing you. Federal government, in its wisdom, actually in this case, decided instead of having that happen, you'll just have a single audit, which means the auditor will come in and audit all the federal programs at one time. And so that's why it's called a single audit. And like I said, anytime you spend more than $500,000, you're required by federal law to have a single audit. The federal government specifies what we have to do in these audits. We have to do a bunch of internal control work over and above what we already do, and we have to do a bunch of compliance testing. And it's specific to the grant. So one grant may have one set of rules, and another grant may have a whole nother set of rules. So it's pretty complicated when we do that. It also requires specific reporting, and that's some of the reports that you'll see in here. There's a report on financial reporting that we'll go through really briefly. There's a report on program compliance. There's a schedule of findings and question costs that kind of summarizes the single audit process. There's a summary of prior year's audit findings, and then the actual schedule of federal awards, which you already saw. For the single audit for this past fiscal year, we actually tested the CDBG Plant Science Center. There's two years, considered two separate grants, so we tested those. And then the Mid-America BRIC grants. We had to test those as major programs. So what that means is, we have to go in and test audit compliance for those three different programs, make sure that everything was done right in accordance with those federal specifications. If you look on page 91 to 92, this is the report on financial reporting. So this talks about the financial reporting process itself. We look at internal control, and we look at compliance. Internal control, we didn't have any material weaknesses. We did have one significant deficiency, and we'll talk about that when we get to the management letter. This is consistent with last year. The federal government doesn't really care about this, to be honest. So there was no real issues there. Did not identify any noncompliance with general laws and regulations over financial reporting. The report on pages 93 to 94 is specifically on program compliance, those three federal programs that I talked about. When we looked at internal control over those programs, we did not identify any material weaknesses. And when we tested compliance, we did not identify any noncompliance. We actually issued an opinion on your program compliance, and it's unqualified, which is the best that you can do. So overall, pretty good. Any questions on, go back, any questions on the single audit or any of those reports? I think overall, the city does a really good job monitoring them and keeping track of them, so. Okay, that's all I'm going to cover in your great big binder. Okay. If you pull out your little blue booklet, there should be a report. The first report I'm going to go through is the auditor communication, which we've actually already touched briefly on. This is a required communication under auditing standards, and it's basically our report from us as your auditors to you, because you're the ones that are ultimately responsible for the city. Talks a little bit about our responsibility under both generally accepted auditing standards and then those governmental auditing standards I briefly mentioned. Talks a little bit about the plan, scope, and timing of the audit. We already talked about the risk assessment process. We go through the fact that we don't test everything. And then it goes through the significant findings. And findings here just means we're telling you stuff. It doesn't mean anything's wrong. There's no change in the accounting policies during the past fiscal year. We did implement GASB 54. That really didn't change anything but the presentation of the equity section. Changed a few of the funds around where a few got combined, but no real significant change. There are significant estimates anytime you do a financial statement at a point in time, like we just talked about. You know how much cash is in the bank, but you know how long your equipment's going to last? That's an example of an estimate. So the estimates that are pretty significant for the city are the receivable allowance, how much you're going to collect of what people owe you, the useful lives of your capital assets, the fair value of contributions that are reported in there, the post-retirement obligations, which includes both the pension and then the health, and then the post-closure costs for the landfill. So those are probably the key estimates that are in your financial statements. Management uses its best, the information that's best available to them to make those estimates, but they could change. The disclosures, we go through all the disclosures. They're neutral, we think they're pretty good. Some of the key disclosures include information about the capital assets, because you have a lot of money tied up in there, debt, and then commitments and contingencies are the ones we think are key. Obviously, we have no difficulty in working with people here. Roger and Vicky and all the staff are really great. We come in and ask a lot of questions. We ask for stuff. We bug them. We try and be nice about it, but we still bug them, I know, and they're always great to work with. Bruce was great to work with this year, too. So we do appreciate all the cooperation that we get. We did identify certain things. It's kind of like, I like to use the example of your checkbook, you know? And do you balance your checkbook to the penny? Or do you balance it to the nearest dollar? Or do you balance it to the nearest hundred dollars? When in audit, we don't balance to the nearest penny. But sometimes when we're doing stuff, we identify things that if you were going to fix everything, you would have fixed these. And that's what this is talking about. So if you flip over to page three again, the two things that we identified, what we talked about already, is the pension liability, we already talked about, and then there were some interest expense that should have been capitalized last year, was capitalized this year. And that was only about $62,000. So in theory, we should have fixed last year and then changed interest expense this year. But again, we just didn't feel those were big enough dollars to mess with, so we're just telling you that we found these, but we didn't adjust for them. No disagreements with management. We prepare the finances, but we send them over to Roger, and Roger goes through them with a fine-tooth comb, so. Any questions on that report?
On the interest expense, the $62,750, you're saying it was not recognized in 2010, and it should have been?
What we're saying is, it actually should have been added to the asset. When you're constructing an asset and there's debt out there until you actually place it in service-
Okay.
-you're supposed to add the interest to the cost of that asset. And what happened last year was, it actually got expensed instead of being added to the asset. This year, Roger fixed it. So he added it to the asset this year, and interest expense is actually $62,000 less this year than what it should have been. At the end of the fiscal year, everything is okay at the current year. It just means last year is a little bit wrong, this year's a little bit wrong, but on September 30, everything is okay.
Where I came from, they call that AFFUDC, allowance for funds used during construction. Okay. Now I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. Any other questions on that report?
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Last report I'm going to go through is the management letter. Just a couple things to point out. People think auditors come in and look at every transaction. They think they come in and look for things that are wrong. We're better than the IRS auditors, I can tell you that. But when we look at internal control, again, it's going back to that risk assessment process. We have to understand how things work here to figure out how we're going to do the city's audit. And it's different from entity to entity. So we do have to gain an understanding of internal control over your financial reporting process. We don't have to look at internal control over everything, but just the things that end up in your financial statements. We don't do enough work to actually issue an opinion on your internal control. But what we do is, as we're going through our process, if we notice things, then we tell you about them. And we actually have to categorize them in three different categories when we find stuff. The first one is just an internal control deficiency. It just means we saw a break in your system. Something's not quite right. We're not actually required to tell you that unless we choose to. Then, if we think it's more serious, we have to consider whether or not it's a material weakness. And what a material weakness means is that there's a reasonable possibility that your financial statements could be materially wrong. Doesn't mean it actually has to have happened. It just means if it did happen, it could really impact your financial statements. So that's the most serious one. Significant deficiency just means, we didn't think it's a material weakness, but we thought it was a big enough deal to tell you about it in writing. So the material weakness and the significant deficiencies, we have to put those in writing to you. So that's kind of the category. So it's first internal control deficiency, then a significant deficiency, and then a material weakness is the most serious of those. You did not have any material weaknesses, so that's obviously a good thing. The significant deficiency, and this is consistent with last year and consistent with a lot of other entities, just relates to the preparation of the financial statements. Could the city, using its staff, prepare this whole thing without us? They could probably prepare most of it, but if you're looking at all the footnotes, whether or not the footnotes are complete and accurate, whether or not all the accounting standards are followed in preparing those, we just feel like it's not quite there. Roger and Vicky, I think, do a really good job keeping up on stuff, but again, it goes to a matter of where do you want to spend your time and resources? And for them to keep up with every accounting standard that's out there probably is not the best use of their resources. So that's why that comment is in there. We prepare the financial statements. Roger does go through them, but that's kind of what it's related to. And it's really common in a lot of smaller entities, or a lot of entities your size as well. So we're required to tell you about it, but we're not recommending that you do much to change it unless you choose to. So that's it for our report. Any questions at all in the audit process, or anything that we do as part of it? We do appreciate the opportunity to do the audit. Roger had a few new people to deal with this year, but hopefully it wasn't too bad. But I think that the staff does a great job in working with us to get the audit done, and we do appreciate all the cooperation. Any other questions? Otherwise, that's all I had. Roger, anything you want to add?
I do want to let the council know that Vicky was instrumental in helping with part of the compensation, particularly, until we had Bruce doing this in July. I had to help Vicky a lot to help me keep up with all of the accounting measures, and again, I want to make sure that she's recognized for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from January 23, 2012 Work Session. And I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Nichols?
Epstein.
Bush?
Yes.
Williams?
Stane.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Next, we have minutes from our January 23, 2012 Regular Session, and I move we approve those minutes.
Second.
Nichols?
Epstein.
Bush?
Yes.
Williams?
Stane.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Under new business this evening, we have, under new business resolutions, we have Bill Number 2012-10, a resolution accepting a sanitary sewer easement at 1420 South Morris. And this is up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. This is an existing line that was under the house, that location, and that I think the home was built after the mine. Those things sometimes obviously happen, and so we have to change it. And to cover the details, we'll turn to Kenzie Russell.
This is a situation that really came about from our sewer system evaluation study. When we were smoke testing the lines, we had smoke appear in this area. And so then, after we acquired the TV camera in order to TV sewer lines, we began the TV-ing process of those lines where we had smoke indication of issues. And we found the problem on the sewer line that runs under the house at this address. The problem is actually right at the foundation, fortunately not directly under the house, but it's an older line, poor condition. And so we approached the property owner about getting an easement to relay the line around the house. And so what we have here is the sewer easement that lets us relocate the city main. We actually are in the process of doing that construction work now. It's at the corner of Wilmar and Morris. You probably, if you drive Morris, have seen the dirt and all going on there. We will then repair the collapsed portion of the old line and connect the, or reestablish the house service connection at that location. So in essence, we'll have a segment of new sewer that is maintainable, not under the house, and the house will, property owner in exchange for this easement's going to end up with a reestablished service connection with new pipe. So that's what he's getting out of the deal here. And so we're just asking that the council accept the sewer easement from the property owner that allows to record it and make a prominent part of our record.
How big a line they put in, can you think?
The new line is an eight-inch main, and the service line for the house will be a four-inch, standard four-inch service connection.
Is it hooked into an eight, or is it?
It, the-
The old line?
The old line is an eight also. So there's no change in the size.
Thank you. Thank you, Kenzie.
I'm going to come up with Bill Number 2012-10.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Bill Number 2012-10, a resolution accepting a sanitary sewer easement at 1420 South Morris, whereas it is necessary to relocate the city sewer main that was discovered under an existing house located at 1420 South Morris, and whereas the property owner agrees to give an easement for the placement of two manholes and relocating of the sewer main. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Mexico-Missouri as follows. Section 1, the city accepts of a five-foot wide sanitary sewer easement along the south and west boundaries of Lot 4 of W.B. Harrison's second addition, known as 1420 South Morris, for the purpose of installing and maintaining a relocated sanitary sewer main. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. I move for passage of Bill Number 2012-10.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
The second new business resolution we have this evening is Bill Number 2012-11, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. This is also up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. It is the desire of the participating agencies that we enter into this cooperative agreement as an enforcement effort to reduce drug-related crimes in the area. And to cover the details, I will turn to Roger Haynes.
Good evening. The East Central Drug Task Force, which is organized in 2001, is a cooperative effort between the Sheriff's Office of Audrain, Montgomery, Warren Counties, the police departments in the cities of Bowling Green, Mexico, Montgomery City, and Vidalia, and the Missouri State Highway Patrol. The East Central Drug Task Force identifies and targets for prosecution the most criminally active drug enterprises that affect the task force area, and all criminal activities of the drug enterprises are addressed by this task force. The task force enhances the effectiveness of federal, state, and local law enforcement resources through a well-coordinated initiative, seeking the most effective investigative and prosecutive avenues by which to convict and incarcerate drug offenders. The task force is a joint operation with all agencies acting as partners, and the executive board is comprised of participating entities. And Chief Rocket, of course, serves on that board. The attached memorandum of understanding outlines the operation of the task force for the 2012-2013 grant year. The City of Mexico is anticipating to contribute $12,000 during this grant year, and it will be properly funded. Staff recommends that council proceed with the reading and passage of the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do the other communities contribute based on population?
I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Do, do the other communities contribute based on population, or how is this, how are the other communities paying for this?
The lion's share of the contribution, and Chief Rocket, please correct me if I am wrong, is paid for by the city of Mexico, Audrain County, and Warren County. Others that are members of this particular cooperative do not have quite the resources that the three members I mentioned have. I know Stuart Miller, Chief Stuart, excuse me, Sheriff Stuart Miller, tries to, you know, gather as much funds as he can from each of those organizations as they can afford to do.
So Audrain County does participate, though?
Yes.
Okay. We know their drugs are a huge problem in the state of Missouri, so we certainly need to do what we can.
Mayor, I'd point out that the city of Mexico was a founding member of that organization. It's been a member of it since its inception in 2001.
I move for reading of bill number 2012-11.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-11, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. Whereas the East Central Drug Task Force is a joint cooperative effort between the sheriff's offices in Audrain, Montgomery, and Warren Counties, and police departments in the cities of Bowling Green, Mexico, Montgomery City, and Vadea, and the Missouri State Highway Patrol. And whereas the East Central Drug Task Force identifies and targets for prosecution the most criminally active drug enterprises that affect the task force area, and all criminal activities of the drug enterprises are addressed by the task force. And whereas the city of Mexico desires to execute a memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the memorandum of understanding with the East Central Drug Task Force. The memorandum of understanding is attached and marked as Exhibit A. Section two, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of its passage. Move for passage of bill number 2012-11.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
The next new business resolution we have is bill number 2012-12, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign change order number one with Karen Brock Construction Incorporated contract for the Sanaback Street concrete repairs. And this is also up for reading and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. At the last council meeting, we approved the contract with Karen Brock to do concrete street repairs on Sanaback. The bids came in very well, and this change order would allow us to do additional work of the same type. And to cover the details, I will turn to Kenzie Russell.
As Bruce noted, we got very competitive pricing on the contract for the removal and replacement of concrete pavement on Sanaback Street. And looking at our budget amounts and streets that we have identified as needing similar concrete repair work is Quisenberry, there that runs beside the park and the historical museum. While that's not a real high-traffic street in the ordinary course of things, it's a high-visibility street for us with the walk-back in time and other issues, and it has deteriorated significantly. So we have identified the areas on Quisenberry that need replacement and repair and are proposing to have Karen Brock do part of that work. We will do the rest of it with our city forces. This just allows us to make what we think is a wise expenditure of funds, take advantage of competitive prices. It allows us to do some other things with city forces rather than tying them up on a special project. So this adds about 301 square yards of removal and replacement work to Karen Brock's contract, the work to be done actually on Quisenberry Street.
What percentage of that street does that cover?
Couldn't tell you exactly. This is approximately, it'll be work, and it's not a total replacement of the street. It's just a move and replace of the bad areas. This work that we've identified for Karen Brock is on the west end of Quisenberry. And actually, I think if you drive out there, you'll see some markings, some paint markings on the street where we've measured things up on the street. I expect, well, I really couldn't tell you what a percentage on it is, but I'd say roughly we're less than 25% of the street overall that we will do repair work on.
That'll take care of half of what needs to be done, or?
Probably roughly half. A lot of the work is concentrated on the west end, so it makes it a little easier to put into a change order. And then the more smaller repairs, the more scattered, smaller ones that are a little more appropriate to our workforce and equipment will handle in-house.
Back to the last, how long had that street on Sanaback been there?
I believe that that was built about 26 or 27 years ago. We were looking at some of that with the culvert pipe at Friendship Baptist Church that collapsed, and we looked to see how old the culvert was under Sanaback. That is something we'll have to address sometime, probably in the next four or five years, because it is deteriorating also. But I believe that it, the culvert was put in at the time the street was built, and I believe that was roughly 26, 27 years ago.
These prices that we have in here are the same prices we got in, on the bid?
Right.
They were the low bidder?
Unit prices from the bid, right.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm making motion to read bill number 2012-12.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-12, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a change order number one with Karen Brock Construction Incorporated contract for the Sanaback Street contract repairs. Whereas change order number one with the Karen Brock Construction Incorporated will adjust contract quantities, and the contract times reflect additional work to be completed on Quisenberry Street. Whereas change order number one will add $14,849.10 to the contract amount and add 10 calendar days to the contract time. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Mexico, Missouri as follows. Section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to sign the change order number one to the Sanaback Street contract repair on behalf of the city of Mexico with Karen Brock Construction Incorporated to add $14,849.10 to the contract amount. Section two of this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the time of passage. I move for passage of bill number 2012-12.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Under new business ordinances this evening, we have bill number 2012-13, an ordinance relating to the city of Mexico's local emergency management agency. And this is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. And I don't want to confuse this at all with the Audrain County Emergency Management. This is a separate deal that the city has been working with the state on for a number of years, and we received grant funding for this, and this is to continue that funding. And this ordinance is a requirement of that. And to cover the details, I will turn to Chief Rocket.
The attached ordinance is part of a requirement by the state. This year, it continues, the requirements continue to grow, and this is the last thing, one of the last things that we have to accomplish with this year's grant request, the other being a three-day class that I have to attend. We've been receiving grant money from the state of Missouri for 20-plus years to train personnel, prevent and minimize, and repair injury and damage due to disaster. And like I said, due to the changes in requirements, we needed to adopt the attached ordinance. So we recommend that we proceed with the two readings by title only and passage.
How much is the grant for?
$4,000, $5,000?
Last year, I think we were sitting on $5,380.
Are you limited on what you can?
No, I'm sure there is some kind of limit, but what we have been doing is just working with the EMPG information and meetings. Like I said, as those requirements have grown, we're now required to do six exercises a year and that kind of thing. But it's been really good for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Your Honor, I move for first reading of bill number 2012-13.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-13, an ordinance relating to the city of Mexico's local emergency management agency. I would move for second reading by title only.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-13, an ordinance relating to the city of Mexico's local emergency management agency. Your Honor, I would move for passage of bill number 2012-13.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
The next new business ordinance we have this evening is bill number 2012-14, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the improvement of Audrain Road 820, Commerce Road, Phase Two. This is up for two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. We did receive a grant funding to do Phase One of Commerce Road. Again, the bids were very favorable, and we have completed that work. And there are funds remaining, and we would like to take advantage of that to the extent possible and do some additional work on the road. And to cover the details of that, I will turn to Kenzie Russell.
It's not very often I get to correct my boss, but we have not 100% completed Phase One. We did a final inspection with MoDOT last week of Phase One. There is a punch list to be taken care of, most of which depends upon getting better weather to do the seeding and get the vegetative cover in place. This is Phase Two, and in order to use the balance of the funds that were initially awarded to us, MoDOT has been working with us to, in essence, create a second project. This was a methodology that the Federal Highway Administration said we needed to do rather than just a change order to our existing contract. We basically had to start at the beginning and enter into a new agreement for the remaining funds, and that's what this is. There's approximately $108,000 remaining that would be available for construction. We anticipate that we would be able to pave another 500 to 600 feet of Commerce Road or AR 820. And the environmental process has been completed with MoDOT. There's still, I believe, a step or two to get the matching CDBG funds taken care of. Once that's done, we'll have to obtain the road right-of-way from the county, and then we'll be able to proceed with the construction. The design is essentially in place for most of that because we had designed beyond the end of the road initially to be sure that grades and all would work. So we anticipate that we could move fairly quickly once we complete jumping through the hoops and the paperwork for federal highways and MoDOT, and this is one of those steps. It's the same agreement that we entered into for Phase One. It's just relabeled with a new description for Phase Two.
We don't have the right-of-way at this time on the 500 or 600 feet.
The roadway is annexed into the city limits, but we have not actually acquired the ownership of the right-of-way. That still resides in the county for the extra. We do have the right-of-way for what has been paved.
Will they go to the property line or almost to the property line or the far property line?
This will carry us a little past the property line, the east property line of the Plant Science Center. The original annexation included the Plant Science Center and a small tract east of that. And that, because we had that initially, we're covered under the grant to go across the frontage of the Plant Science Center Technology Park lands. So we will actually go a little beyond the east line of Plant Science Center with this. We're going to try to carry it as far as money will go, essentially.
Thank you, Kenzie.
Do we do, do we just do a removal out there, is that?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we just do a removal out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We have put the, both hunting field and the paved portion on our snow route, have added that in. And actually, the gravel portion in front of the 52 acres that we've purchased for Technology Park, we've already kind of worked things out, if you will, with Special 13. We've moved our maintenance signs, and we'll be taking care of that gravel section adjacent to our property.
Thank you. I'm making motion for review, number 2012-14.
Second.
On title of that passage?
Nichols?
She did that. Yes, ma'am.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-14, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the improvement of Audrain Road 820, Commerce Road, Phase Two. Move for second reading of bill number 2012-14.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Bill number 2012-14, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the improvement of Audrain Road 820, Commerce Road, Phase Two. I move for passage of bill number 2012-14.
Second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
The last new business ordinance we have this evening is bill number 2012-15, an ordinance amending the code of the city of Mexico, Missouri, Chapter Four, Construction and Maintenance of Buildings, Article Six, Building Code Appeals, Division One. Building Code Board of Appeals setting forth procedures for the creation of a Building Code Board of Appeals. Two readings by title only and passage. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. This is the guidelines for the implementation of the Building Code Board of Appeals. We discussed this at work session back in December. And to cover the details of the ordinance, we will turn to Rita Jackson.
This attached ordinance creates sections in Chapter Four, Construction and Maintenance of Buildings, which will outline and of Buildings, which will outline and implement the procedure for the creation of a Building Code Board of Appeals. As stated earlier, this was presented at the December 12 study session. It was also presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission in November 3, 2011. This board does not fall under the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but city staff felt that it was important to present the proposal to them and solicit other in outside input. Per the 2006 International Building Codes, which were adopted in May of 2007, the city should have a Building Code Boards of Appeals in place to hear and decide appeals of orders, decisions, or determinations made by the Building Code official relative to the application and interpretations of the code. Basically, a board that will actually keep your building inspector honest because there is a possibility there could be some mistakes in the interpretations of the code. The powers and limitations of this board shall be based on claims filed by applicants that the true intent of the code or the rules legally adopted have been incorrectly interpreted, the provisions of the code does not fully apply, or an equally good or better form of construction is proposed. This board should not have any authority to waive the requirements of the Building Code. The Building Code Board of Appeals shall consist of five members, which are qualified by experience and training, to pass on matters pertaining to the Building Code construction. These members shall come from a pool of architectures, engineering, plumbing, electricians, mechanical engineers, commercial or residential contractors, and laypersons. Staff is recommending that council proceed with two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance. And I would like to add, this is also a code that is required in our 2006, and it would also be required in our 2012 Building Codes if adopted.
I think the only thing that I would say on this, and I get Charles' feelings on it, I mean, this is a board that, basically like you just said, is to keep the building inspector honest, correct?
Yes.
So I feel like if they're going to pay $250, and they were the ones, and it was deemed that our building inspector was wrong, do they get their money back?
We had talked earlier about that. If they are right in the interpretations, yes, their money would be refunded. We had talked earlier, the reason we were actually putting a cost in there is sometimes we have people to apply, and then they back out, and this would actually cover some of the expenses for the advertising and court reporters and such.
Will it be, I guess it'll be hard to get volunteers to serve on this board. We seem to have a hard time filling all our boards. Do you anticipate problem with that, or?
In the process of drafting the guidelines for this board, our building inspectors had been talking to contractors that were coming in to solicit interest in the board, and I think that we would probably not have a problem getting members for the board.
Oh, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
I move for reading of Bill number 2012-15 by title only.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bots.
Yes. Bill number 2012-15, an ordinance amending the code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, Chapter Four, Construction and Maintenance of Buildings, Article Six, Building Code Appeals, Division One. Building Code Board of Appeals setting forth procedures for the creation of a Building Code Board of Appeals. I move for second reading of Bill number 2012-15.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Yes. Bill number 2012-15, an ordinance amending the code of the City of Mexico, Missouri, Chapter Four, Construction and Maintenance of Buildings, Article Six. Building Code Appeals, Division One. Building Code Board of Appeals setting forth procedures for the creation of a Building Code Board of Appeals. I move for passage of Bill number 2012-15.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Yes.
Under other business this evening, we have a staff report, street maintenance, 24-inch cold planer.
Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. We did advertise for bids, we did mail notices to vendors for the purchase of this, and to cover the details of the bids received, we will turn to Kenzie Russell.
First, maybe just a word about what this piece of equipment is and does. Cold planer attaches to the skid loader, and it grinds the pavement down and creates a square cut, if you will, so that when we make a permanent hot mix asphalt patch, it bonds to the existing pavement. We get a better permanent patch. And the overall goal here is to do more permanent patches so that we have fewer potholes to have to put cold mix in in the winter time. Cold mix costs about $120 a ton. Hot mix, for a permanent patch, costs about $67 a ton. And so not only is it cost-effective from a material standpoint, the hot mix makes permanent patch that lasts longer, doesn't pop out, and have to be refilled in the same way that cold mix does. So what we're trying to do is operate better and smarter with our patching on our streets. This is a little bit larger mill. We currently do have a smaller mill that's 12 inches wide. This would be 24 inches wide. You've probably seen some of the patches. They look like rectangular patches, long ones maybe down the center line of a street where we've milled that out and made a patch. This particular planer also has a feature of having a tilting head so that we can get over to a gutter line and tilt to match the crown of a street and be an even depth. So when we put the asphalt in and compact it, we get a uniform compaction, uniform patch, and so it'll give us a little more flexibility for doing those patches. We did have four bids for the mill, or I guess actually, five bids. One of the bids from Cummins McGowan Midwest was not 100% responsive. There would have been additional costs in order to modify the skid loader to mount the planer unit, and so the lowest and best bid that was complete, that included everything that was needed, was the one from Siden Stricker Implement Company for $17,018, and we're recommending that that be awarded. It is within our $18,000 budget.
Thank you.
I'm making motion read by the 24-inch cold planer from Siden Stricker Implement Company in Mexico.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bots.
Yes.
Second item under other business is a staff report, and this is on electrical upgrade and emergency generator. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. As a part of the budget, we proposed for upgrades to electrical and to City Hall, and we did advertise for bids and notified 17 local electricians. And to cover the details of the bids and what we received, I'll turn to Rita Jackson.
The 2012, 2011, 2012 budget allows $60,000 for an electrical service upgrade and a replacement of an emergency generator at City Hall. Advertisements for bids were placed in the Mexico ledger on January 25, and also 17 notices were mailed to local and surrounding electricians. A mandatory pre-bid conference was held February 1. We had five participating electricians, and at the time of that pre-bid meeting, we decided, we were a little concerned about the cost of the total project, so we instructed the contractors to bid it in two phases. Phase One being the electrical upgrade, which would consist of replacing the service conductors, your service panel, your transfer switch. And Phase Two would actually be the replacement of the emergency generator. Three bids were received. Meyer Electric was the low bidder for $18,782 for the electrical portion of that bid. The electrical upgrade is estimated to take approximately two days of outage, power outage for here at City Hall. So if this project has to be done over a weekend, the City of Mexico would actually have to pay an additional $2,000 to Ameren Missouri for them to have to work on the weekend. If this project was to be done during the week, it would be at no additional cost. I don't want Chad to get on me for not having my monitor. Excuse me. So due to budget constraints, city staff is recommending that Phase Two, the replacement of the emergency generator, be delayed until later in the budget year so that we could actually run it in the 2012 and 2013 budget year. City staff did have additional meetings today, and we are proposing a meeting on Thursday to look at some other possibilities for maybe being able to do the generator at an earlier time. Staff recommends that council approve the bid of Meyer Electric of Jefferson City, Missouri, in the amount of $18,782 for the electrical upgrade at City Hall.
I guess my question would be, because when you add up Phase One and Phase Two, they're all pretty close, and Myers would be the highest. They do realize that Phase One does not mean they're getting Phase Two. Because I'm just, when you look at their bids, I'm just wondering, did they spread them out over two bids, since they're so close in total, assuming they would get the second phase since they did the first phase?
We have actually already talked to the electricians, and they realized that it's based on low bid for each phase, and that's why we had them to bid it that way.
Okay.
But it's a possibility if we were to do, Myers was actually the low on the electrical, but he was the high on the generator, so it'd be someone else getting the bid.
Yeah, that's why it was, they were just so close when you added them all together, Phase One and Phase Two. I was just wondering, did they realize that one didn't tie necessarily to the other?
It was about a $1,900 difference between the three bids, so they were all pretty consistent.
So what's Ameren do?
That's.
What's their part of it?
That's actually, their part of it would be at no cost to the, if we would, actually to do it over the weekend, but their additional cost is to have them to work on a holiday or a weekend, and they're actually bringing the service into the building, the replacement of their electrical portions of the project.
Right to the bottom, sir.
Yes.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Rita.
So is this, are we going to decide, or are they going to decide about the weekend or not?
I don't know. I think there's one other question here, Rita, concerning.
I'm sorry.
Is this going to be done on the, during the week or on a weekend?
What we were actually going to do, once we contacted Meyer of the bid, we were actually work with him, and see, they estimated it would be basically over eight hours to actually do the work. We haven't gotten to that point yet. We would like to have it done during the week if possible, and we'll just have to work out the final details at a later date.
We'd like to try to do it without the additional costs, but we also have to look at the disruption that we may cause because there are still 24-hour operations here as well, so. Part of it will depend on when they can do it, the best timing, and what makes the most sense when we get there.
And it is.
If we didn't have a service, do we run the generator to a certain point, then bring it to there?
It all has to be disconnected and.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it is a prevailing wage project, so even if they did it during the week, it's going to be an extra cost because after 5:00, they're going into overtime, so it's catch 22.
And if you shut down the power, no computers. Just give the staff the deal.
Now you're talking.
We use up the Christmas holiday and Spent Christmas holiday.
I'm, thank you.
You could actually give us Good Friday, baby.
Good Thursday and Good Friday.
Your Honor, I move for acceptance of the bid from Meyer Electric Jefferson City, Missouri, in the amount of $18,782 for the Phase One.
Your Honor, I accept, second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bots.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have staff report, report appointment to planning and zoning. Bruce?
Yes, Your Honor. Frank Mers' term expired July 2011. He did not wish to be reappointed. Since then, we have received an application from Louis Brooks Jr. requesting to be appointed, and we would recommend the council make that appointment.
I'd move to appoint Louis Brooks Jr. to the planning and zoning board.
Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bots. Yes.
Okay, next, we have claims. Any questions or comments concerning the claims?
Make a motion to pay the claims. Second.
Nichols.
Yes.
Lash.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, down to council comments. Councilman Bots.
I'd just like to thank Roger and Vicky for all their hard work and preparation for and helping with the audit. It seemed to go very smoothly. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
I'd also like to ditto the appreciation there, but I'd also like to see if Chief Rocket would like to talk about the Everbridge system that I'm hearing so much about that I get a little more detail. Yeah, you're fine.
Call notification. Steve Shaw went through a lot of a process. Steve Shaw, the emergency management director, went through a lot of processes and looking through a lot of different programs, and there are just a myriad of them out there. Now, Everbridge looked the best for us and does so much more than I ever dreamed about. I started several years ago using Code Red, which I thought was, you know, the be-all and end-all of it, but the Everbridge does so much more for us. It's, the emergency call notification is community notice, community notices, notifications. We can use it internally to use it for an officer callback or to call officers to the scene of any kind of an emergency. For example, the phone will start calling if we need, say, five officers to come in. It will call until five officers acknowledge that they'll be in, and then it stops calling. So we don't have to sit there and call each person individually. It can also call everybody and say, how soon can you be here? Press one for 15 minutes, two for 30 minutes, you know? So we know how many people we have coming and when they're coming. So we're very pleased with the Everbridge system and can't wait to get it up and running. I think sometime next month, we should be ready to go.
How's that working with? How's that divided out? Because I'm getting kind of different stories on who's.
They're paying part of, they're paying it, and then we're gonna pay on some kind of plan with it for, over the course of three years.
All, all the, the, so the county's a partner, the city of Mexico, the city of Vandelia, Joint Communications, Audrain Ambulance Association is part of it, am I missing someone?
The health unit.
Health unit. So they're all partners, they're all stakeholders, and everyone's paying a portion, and it's proportionate share to their, their needs.
Should tell people that. Should tell people that, because at our meeting we were at, it's all county management. They paid it all, he's paying it all, so he told us.
They, they did initially pay it all.
That's all I have.
Roger, how long have you been doing the audits? You have any idea?
As far as the cappers, we've been successful every year, so that'd be twenty-two years that we receive the award, and we're going for a twenty-third.
I'm trying to figure if you're a hundred percent, or have you missed a year, or what you did?
We haven't missed a year.
Okay, very good job on that. And whoever's responsible for the amount of snow we've been getting, thank you.
Again, I would add my congratulations, I remember what audit time used to be around here, and it's, it's rough work, and you all do an outstanding job year after year after year, and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Bruce? Again, congratulations on your successful audit, Roger and Vicky, and thank you so much. Next, are there any public comments? Dana?
Mayor Lash, I'm Dana Keller.
Would you want to come up to the microphone, please?
This is just very brief, but as a chamber director, we implement a program with the high school, we have student ambassadors now, and I just wanted to thank Bruce for coming, and he participated in a luncheon learn and visited with those children about educational opportunities, the different disciplines and education requirements that it took to do different jobs within the city, explained to them about sales tax revenue, unemployment rates, just gave them a really great dose of reality and a big push for the education it takes to do most any job these days, and so I just appreciate his willingness to come and be part of that program, and just the comments that followed, it was really well received, and he did a very good job, so we appreciate that. And also, the student ambassadors are available if you all have any use for them, if there's opportunities for them to be involved with economic development, when people come to visit, if, if they have interest in the school system, those kids are prepared to give tours, they will be at the Plant Science Center on demand for guests and visitors can help host events, so please always feel free to give us a call.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Any other comments? Yes, Gary.
I was contacted by several people back in December questioning the hiring of John Afun and Ed Carrera for the Mexico Public Housing Authority, excuse me. I was talking on the radio for thirty years, public speaking, I really stress out. Both of those men had questionable backgrounds before they came to Mexico. They were cited by the USDA for gross mismanagement of their housing authorities in Homestead, Florida, with Ed Carrera, and New York with John Afun. So I was asked why these men were hired by the City of Mexico. I found out from Steve Nichols' warning, that the Housing Authority Board does not answer directly to you all, the city council. But should it? Because we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes millions of dollars, in federal money, being handled by these people.
Bruce, do you have any comments on that, or?
I'll make, I'll make a couple, and then maybe Lou maybe could as well. First of all, Gary, you're absolutely right, that the council does appoint the board, and beyond that, the city has no oversight after that point. And we've had openings to the board, and we've had people apply, and those, you know, you've made those appointments.
I think it's two, is that correct?
Actually.
How many board members do we have?
We have five total.
Five total, out of how many?
Out of five.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, you actually, four you appoint, and one is the resident assistant, resident tenant that is on the board.
As far as their background history, I think we'd want to be real careful, you know, you can make a statement about something to that nature, I think we'd want to be real careful about saying anything about what, what's been made as far as a claim of their character or their background, and I, I don't, I wouldn't even suggest that we go there, maybe Lou would comment further, but I think the issue is, this is an issue for that board, and they do meet regularly, and I'm sure Gary would be more than welcome to attend that board, it's a public board, and you can ask those questions there.
The USDA found gross mismanagement, not the media or some citizen group, it was the USDA.
And again, I think we'd be real careful, that we wouldn't want to comment on what that is. I could turn to Lou further on that, but.
State statutes govern what we can and cannot do, the only authority the city council has is to appoint the board of the housing authority. The executive director of the housing authority is hired by that board, the director is their employee, the only thing that the city council can do is look at when a board member comes up for appointment or reappointment, whether or not to reappoint that person. That's the sole authority that you have. They have their own budget, they have their own employees, they have their own supervisors, and really, you are the appointed authority for the governing board, that's the nature and extent of what you can accomplish, you cannot even remove it. So, that's by state statute, done by the General Assembly.
Is it time for that to change? Given the light of these two men that were hired as directors of the housing authorities?
I will say that, from my understanding of what Lou just said, we can't change it, correct? I mean, that's a state statute, I mean, you would have to talk to Hobbs and those people about, is that correct? I mean, I mean, we can't do anything about that. I think back in the day, we used to, do we not run it way back in the day?
I don't know about way back in the day.
For my time.
The terms, and I don't know, you know, who would be the next person that's up, but they, you know, serve staggered terms, so when the next person would come up for appointment, you go through your process, you advertise, you might even go out and recruit if you wanted to, and then make a decision on who to appoint. You know, frankly, in my experience, there aren't a lot of people beating down the doors to apply to be a member of the housing authority board. Normally, frankly, have to go out and seek people, other than the tenant representative, and it's not one where you see two, three, four, or five people applying for one position. That answer your question?
I was just saying, I mean, we can't change it, I mean, that's a state statute, that's state, state representatives and stuff, that's, we can't do anything about it, that's why I was making it clear, I was making sure I was right to think that, so.
But Rita, Rita Jackson is a city, city employee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, she was involved in, directly involved in hiring these two guys.
Rita Jackson's appointment to the board is a board appointment, has nothing to do with her employment as a city employee.
It looks like it does.
Yeah, but it does not.
It looks like it does. Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? Hearing none, I move we adjourn.
I second.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lash?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.